Good evening and welcome to our board meeting. I'd like to call our meeting to order and I'll turn to Board Member Betty Jenkins to open us up.
Thank you. You please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance at the ward for a moment of silence.
Thank you, may be seated. We will begin tonight's meeting by remembering two students who passed away earlier this school year. Although we celebrate their lives and the positive impact they made on the Guilford County School family, our hearts are extended in grief to their loved ones. On behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to extend our deepest condolences to the families, friends, and teachers of Henry Foy and Audrey Greby.
Henry Foy was a child who defied expectations from the day he was born. With trisomy thirteen, it is rare to get to come home from the hospital, let alone go to school. But go to school Henry did, at Haynes Inman Education Center. He loved every minute of it, from the time the bus pulled up to his house in the morning. He would come through the classroom doors grinning and ready to go. With all the medical equipment keeping him breathing trailing behind him, Henry rode a bike, painted, made pottery, stood, and even took his first steps. How grateful we are to have known the strength of Henry. We are thankful for the memory of his laugh and sly smile. Our lives are better because of the time we shared with Henry.
Audrey Taylor Greby, known as Sidney, was a bold, brave, and determined young woman. Her family likened her to a chameleon, changing her hair and style to reflect a kaleidoscope of her emotions and creative spirit. Sidney wore a unique personality on her sleeve, and she was easy to spot in the hallways of Northwest High School. With her artsy aesthetic, her unique personality lit up any room she entered, and her knowing smile revealed a witty sense of humor. Sidney was an idyllist, who had a big heart, a strong sense of fairness, a firm belief that each person should follow their own moral compass. Art, music, skateboarding, and moments of solitude by the lake are the things that brought Sidney the most joy. Her family said that it was those things that she found peace amid life's complexities. Sidney's free spirit is greatly missed at Northwest High.
Although we were only privileged to know these students for a brief amount of time, in their own ways, they helped to create heartwarming memories that will be cherished forever. To honor these students, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, we would like to invite any family members or school representatives to come forward so that the board can offer its condolences. You can just come this way here. Thank you, would also like to acknowledge that Board Member Deborah Napper is not here. She has also experienced a loss in the family, her niece, and our thoughts and prayers are with her as well. We want to continue by recognizing our January Employee of the Month, Gary Gonzalez. Will you please come to the podium? The block lettering on the wall of Gary Gonzalez' classroom reads, "Discipline of others isn't punishment. You discipline to help, improve, to correct, and prevent." That's the philosophy behind his role at Jamestown Middle, a place he's called home for all of his 28 years as an educator. Gonzalez is a designated Student Success Coordinator, a position that took him out of the classroom and allows him to impact even more of Jamestown Middle's nearly 1,000 students. And now, he can also call himself the Guilford County School Employee of the Month. Gonzalez's primary role is to work with students who may be having disciplinary issues, but this is not your traditional in-school suspension. Teacher Thomas Baker wrote in his nomination, "As our dedicated Student Success Coordinator, Gary consistently goes above and beyond to ensure the emotional well-being and academic progress of our students. His innovative approaches to supporting student growth, fostering positive relationships, and implementing effective interventions have made Jamestown Middle an amazing place to learn and to work." In addition, Gary oversees our Spotlight Breakfast Program, which allows Jamestown Middle School staff to nominate students that are often overlooked but certainly deserve to be in the spotlight. Gary has previously served as the Language Arts and Social Studies teacher, mentor to dozens of student teachers, myself included, many moons ago, as well as a basketball and football coach. After serving over two decades in the classroom, Gary is now in a position where he is truly able to make a lasting impact with all students in our building. Gary received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C.'s and during the month of January, your photo will be on display at the district's central offices at Jamestown Middle and in the Greensboro J.C.'s office. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Diane Bellamy Small to read aloud this certificate honoring Gary.
The Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition presented to Gary Gonzalez, Jamestown Middle School, for Employee of the Month, sponsored by Greensboro J.C.'s, January 2024. Signed by our Superintendent, Dr. Whitney Oakley, and our Board Chair, Dr. Deana Hayes. And I just want you to know, you were 28 years very well.
Thank you.
If you want to have some words.
I just, I am, I don't love the spotlight, but I do want to say thank you. It is, I feel blessed to be able to be at a place for 28 years that I love, that has great leadership, great people, and amazing kids. Jamestown, it's home to me, and if my students succeed, I succeed. And that's how I look at my daily, that's how I get to do every day what I love to do, even after all these years. So, thank you for today, it means a lot to me, and just, I'm really appreciative.
Well, thank you, and we would like to shake your hand and also recognize, we would like to invite your family, friends, or any of the school representatives from Jamestown Middle School that are here to come up as well.
Thank you.
Well, we get to see parents come out when their students do something. It's nice to have your parents come out when you're an adult and see you recognized. So, that was beautiful, thank you again very much. We are now at public comments, and we have three. Just as we begin to call your name, we would like to remind you that you have three minutes to make your comments. When the amber light comes on, you have about 15 seconds left. And when the red light and buzzer come on, your time is up. We would ask that you not mention any student or personnel by name. If there is a concern or need that you have, we will have a staff person meet and work with you in the lobby. If something is said that you support and agree with, we ask that you express that by doing this so that the speaker can continue uninterrupted. Our first speaker for the evening is Katie Lind, followed by Hashini Karthik. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Katie Lind. I reside at 1804 Fergus Street, I'm in District Four. I'm a lecturer at the University of North Carolina, Greensboro. I stand before you to request that you, the Guilford County School Board, demonstrates your love for your students by showing your love for the environment. Solar Power Now Coalition will be sending Superintendent Oakley and others Valentines, urging you to show your love for the environment by committing to a deadline to transition to 100% clean energy. The Solar Power Now Coalition has urged you to commit to make this transition by 2050. When you do this, you will be joining a choir of local counties that have made similar resolutions. For example, in 2018, Wake County's Board of Commissioners endorsed the goal of 100% clean energy by 2050 in partnership with the Wake County Public School System. In 2022, Forsyth County set a goal to completely transition to clean and renewable energy by 2050. While Commissioner Ted Kaplan stated that long-term goals like this are more of a wish, he agreed to the proposal. So, let's consider that. A goal without a plan is just a wish. Last April, Guilford County Schools Superintendent passed an administrative resolution with the intent to transition to 100% clean energy. With this resolution, Guilford County Schools is making strides towards sustainability, but without a clear goal date, that is no, there's no accountability. However, this wish to meet a 2050 deadline is a lot more realistic than you're giving yourselves credit for. From reducing carbon emissions from school buses to planning new construction projects that are designed to meet Silver Lead standards, Guilford County Schools have the ability to transition to 100% clean energy. As part of the regulations last April, Superintendent Oakley is expected to report annually on sustainability measures in progress. Dr. Oakley, we are eager to see that report. Now is, it is the time to make smart, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time, time-bound goals, and all that Guilford County is missing is the T for time-bound. As proof that this is achievable, I point to the Repower Our Schools Coalition, who released two reports published in 2016 authored by the North Carolina Clean Energy Technology Center. These reports indicate that Durham and Charlotte Mecklenburg Public Schools, two of the largest school districts in North Carolina, could achieve their goal for 100% renewable energy and save millions of dollars. That is $54.6 million for Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools and $16.3 million for Durham Public Schools in 25 years by installing solar panels to power their schools. Guilford County Public Schools is already making similar progress, but lacking the commitment to set a date. Make this wish a smart goal. Please, show your love for your students and your environment by committing to the goal of 100% clean energy by 2050. Thank you.
Thank you. Hashini Karthik, followed by our final speaker, Julie Robbins. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Hashini Karthik, and I live at 2409 Donning Court. I stand to, stand before you today as an eighth grader at Brown Summit Middle School, speaking on behalf of the Solar Power Now Coalition. First and foremost, I want to express my gratitude to Superintendent Oakley's recent updates to the district's energy regulations. This step signifies the district's dedication to addressing this climate issue. However, let us acknowledge that this is just the beginning of a critical journey. This journey will help thousands upon thousands of students and faculty in Guilford County to be able to ensure this essential transition to 100% clean energy. It is necessary to have a strong deadline, particularly 2050. It is incredibly important to have this deadline, because any time longer will be simply too long. We are already able to see the effects of the rising temperatures and increasing food insecurity in our own city borders. These challenges are not only plaguing distant regions, they are plaguing our own city borders, the society we live in. I simply cannot remember the last time I was able to make a proper snowman or wake up to the joy of seeing my own backyard coated in a blanket of snow. However, setting this 2050 deadline is not the only step we must take. To be able to keep ourselves accountable and efficient while addressing this climate crisis, we must set benchmark deadlines. We also must question what's holding us back from creating such deadlines as various other cities within North Carolina, such as Charlotte and Hillsborough, have adopted these years ago. Furthermore, another step that we must take is putting significant financial resources into hiring an energy engineer. The energy engineer will be able to keep us accountable to our 2050 deadline for 100% clean energy. Without them, we may not be able to transition to the clean energy that we need for our Guilford County students and faculty. They will play a key role in future-proofing our energy infrastructure and tackling the climate change problem we are facing. However, to hire an energy engineer to help us in our process, we must put in the financial resources. One reason that this position has been open for many months now is likely the insufficient starting salary. We are putting the well-being of the students and faculty members at risk because we are not taking these steps to find and hire an energy engineer. I'm not alone in voicing these concerns as I speak on the behalf of numerous GCS students who share my apprehensions about the climate safety of our educational environments. There are numerous avenues through which we can work towards a clean energy goals, and we have already taken significant strides. However, the true impact of our actions will only be realized if we commit to achieving 100% clean energy by 2050 and begin formulating our plans accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Julie Robbins. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Eight years ago, when my four-year-old son started at Washington Montessori, I had no idea how much we would value his time there. My son thrived at Washington, and now my daughter does too. And they're not the only ones. Amazing things are happening at Washington. Goals are being surpassed. Our incredible principal has led a dedicated staff and a coalition of community volunteers who have accomplished so much, from school and campus improvements, to community events, to health and wellness programs that have our kids' learning skills that they will value for life. But this has been a difficult year. I've watched so much progress rewarded with disappointment, first when Washington was removed from the list of schools to be rebuilt, and now with the likely discontinuation of the Montessori program at Washington. I recognize that costs have affected many of our planned facility, projects. Excuse me. I understand the desire of the district to consolidate its Montessori offerings and to reduce busing. But my heart hurts at the thought that Washington's progress could be slowed by the loss of students, leading to a loss of staff and resources. I do wonder if the district has considered not only the number of students affected at Washington, but the degree of need in the Washington community. When American Public Schools began, it didn't begin as a place for parents to choose from specialized learning programs, but as an endeavor to build the community that we want to live in tomorrow, to forge compassionate leaders, build a competent and confident workforce, inspire neighbors to be tolerant, and build a citizenry that will make our community stronger. That is the education that my children have received at Washington. They are learning to be members of our community, that we all have a role and a purpose, and that we, as we often say here, are better together. That's not on the sign-out in front of Washington, but written in the dedication of our staff, our families, volunteers, and supporters, inspiring academic learning and character-building every day at our school. As a citizen of Guilford County, I want to see our schools continue to strive for equity in education for all of our students. As the parent of a Washingtonian, I only want the best for our school. Our family will make sacrifices next year to overcome the loss of busing for my daughter, because I know no matter what, she'll have another great year. It's worth it. I challenge you to unveil the next great chapter at Washington. Our students are worth it, and they deserve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That closes our public comment portion of the meeting. We are now at approval of the agenda.
Is there a motion?
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are now at the consent agenda, Dr. Oakley.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening's consent agenda includes the following items: Approval of December 23 meeting minutes, Personnel Action Report, 2324 Budget Amendments and Transfers Report, Approval of Faust Elementary School Gaming and Robotics Program, Approval of PEC K-8 Expeditionary Learning Program, Discontinuation of the Magnet Program at Murphy Traditional Academy, Discontinuation of the Montessori Program at Washington Elementary School, Contractual Agreement with H.M. Kern Construction Corporation for the HVAC Renovation and Controls Project for the Annex Building at the Academy at Lincoln, Recommendation to Negotiate Design Services for the Allen J. Elementary School Bond Project with Mosley Architects, Recommendation to Negotiate Design Services for the Sternberger Elementary School Bond Project with Clark Nixon, and 2425 Board of Education Meeting Schedule. This concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Move the consent agenda.
We have been, I've been asked to pull item A through K, so what you will be motioning on, Board Member Bellamy Small, is B through J. Is there a second? Well, we'll go through and vote after we get a second.
Not A through K, just A and J.
B through J is what A and K were asked to be pulled.
Got it, yes.
Right. So, we're gonna be, we're gonna be voting on B and J. Sorry, B through J is what we're gonna be voting on. Okay. Thank you, Kim. Michael. Betty.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Chrissy.
No on D and E, and yes on the rest.
And Diane.
Yes.
And Deana, yes. So, A, B, B, C, F, G, H, and J pass unanimously, and D and E pass by a vote of seven to one. Okay, is that right? All right, now we're at item A, and I'll turn to Board Member Erby. You sure? I thought you said the December board meeting minutes. I'm sorry. Okay.
Move item A.
Okay, okay, all right. Sarah, second?
Second.
Let's see, Kim?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Deana, yes, that passes by a vote of eight to zero. And now, I'll turn to Pastor Sheraus for item K.
Yes, just looking at our board member schedule, I'm suggesting that we better utilize the conventional hours of our staff and preserve the weekend, and so I move to substitute the retreat slated for Saturday, February 22, 2025, for a half-day retreat on Thursday, February 20, 2025.
Just can I have a minute to look at the calendar real quick?
Yes, and can we get a motion in a second? And then we can vote on it.
The motion.
Okay, the motion, can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, now you can read it, and then we'll vote, have some discussion. That's okay. Oh, any other, any questions? Any discussion?
Could someone repeat the motion? No, I move that we shift the retreat scheduled for February 22, 2025, a Saturday, to the Thursday prior February 20, and make it a half-day retreat on a weekday to better utilize the conventional hours for our staff and to preserve everybody's weekend. And I do that in honor of all soccer coaches.
Sorry about that. No, I would, I would suggest that maybe we keep it like on a Tuesday when we normally meet? Or swap it out for another day. Another Tuesday.
Diane?
I'd like to get the superintendent, she doesn't mind, to weigh in on this because the board retreat is, I know it's our retreat, but we try to cover things that are either beneficial for us if we do our governance here, or if there are other things that need to be, that take longer periods of time than what we have during the board meeting.
And we can do that on any day of the week. I mean, it's the truth of the matter. I mean, I think as long as we have the time protected and people know ahead of time, it doesn't really change how we would plan or prepare, regardless of the day of the week, we're gonna be here and we're gonna be prepared with plenty of content for the board to consider. We won't, it'll be a true retreat.
Okay.
Yeah, I would prefer that Tuesday to 18th, because we normally meet on Tuesdays, to be consistent. That's the only thing I would suggest.
So, is that a substitute motion?
That's if he's, you know, friendly with that.
A weekday is, is my priority. Thursday, I think, looked to be the best, but I'm happy to move to Tuesday.
Thank you. Then that's my substitute motion, as to use Tuesday, the 18th.
Or if he would make his motion Tuesday, then you can second that.
Sure.
I move that the retreat scheduled for February 25, 2025, a Saturday, be moved to February 18, 2025, a Tuesday.
Second.
Diane?
My only concern with that is that if, if the calendar stays the same, that day before is a holiday, is it not? It's President's Day. So, again, I, I turn to the superintendent as to the challenge that...
We don't take that off.
You don't? Okay, all right.
Yesterday was...
Trying to protect your, your...
We appreciate that.
All right, okay, thank you.
All right, so we're on item K, and I will start with you again, Kim.
Yes.
Michael? Betty?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Diane?
No.
And Deana, yes. That passes by a vote of seven to one. All right, we are now at comments, uh, from the chair. Good evening, um, I want to begin tonight by remembering the life of Sergeant Dale Nix, whose life was tragically, tragically cut short last month. Officer Nix was a Guilford County Schools graduate and a Guilford County School parent, and our hearts, our prayers, and our support go out to his family, his loved ones, his colleagues, all of the people, um, that he touched. I have no doubt that the lives of many Guilford County Schools families were made better through his work at the Families Victims, Family Victims Unit. To honor his life and legacy, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. The Guilford County Schools Choice Application Period will open this Friday, January nineteenth, and close on Friday, February twenty-third. During that time, families may apply to dozens of choice schools and programs, many of which are ranked among the best in the state and nationally. To learn more about these programs, visit the Guilford County Schools Choice Showcase on Wednesday, January thirty-first, from five-thirty to eight PM at the Greensboro Coliseum Special Event Center. More information can be found at this website, Congratulations to Superintendent Whitney Oakley, who is named as a Superintendent to Watch by the National School Public Relations Association. Dr. Oakley joins, uh, just twenty-four other superintendents nationwide who were selected for the honor and recognition of their innovative and effective use of technology to engage and inform the school community and to expand two-way communication and outreach efforts. Congratulations. Guilford County Schools and the North Carolina Department of Administration will host two virtual sessions to help minority and women-owned businesses get certified as historically underutilized businesses, also called HUB. The virtual sessions are on Thursday, January eighteenth, and Thursday, February fifteenth, starting at six PM. For more details and to register, visit our website at www.gcsnc.com. Last month, I shared information about a donation of the book, "I Wish I Had an Otter," to our kindergarten students. I'd like to clarify that the books were donated by a partnership between Compass Healthcare and Rehab and, and Pink Bull Press. We want to thank Todd and Emily Nun for their generosity. Uh, thank you, and this concludes my remarks. Dr. Oakley, Superintendent's report?
Thank you. January is School Board Appreciation Month, um, often a thankless job, and I'd like to start by recognizing the contributions of our board members. Board members dedicate their time and their energy to understanding the needs of the district and working to ensure that our students and staff have the resources and guidance they need to be successful. To thank them for their service, we have a small token of our appreciation that demonstrates the talents of our very own students, um, and staff will come forward and present them with those. Also want to say congratulations to the GCS Rookie Teacher of the Year, Kenyana Bethay, who is a finalist for the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, twenty-twenty-four Empower North Carolina Beginning Teacher of the Year Award. She and her fellow finalists will spend a week of professional development at the Center in Cullowhee in mid-February, and the award will be presented on February fifteenth. Good luck to the GCS students who are competing in the District Science Fair tomorrow. The fair will be held from eight AM to two PM at the Greensboro Science Center, and awards will be presented at Dudley High School at six PM. GCS will be celebrating Love the Bus Week in February, and we want you to join us. Share your appreciation for our bus drivers and transportation staff on social media and tag at GCS Schools NC, or email your comments to goodnews@gcsnc.com, and we will share it for you. Tammy White, Band Director at Kaiser Middle and former GCS Teacher of the Year, is representing North Carolina as one of fifty directors who make a difference. She was featured in the School Band and Orchestra Magazine, sharing the impact that she hopes to leave on students. Guilford Parent Academy is hosting two virtual sessions to help families with the registration process for middle and high school. The high school transition meeting will take place on January twenty-fifth, and the middle school transition meeting will take place on January thirtieth, both at six PM. To learn more and register, visit gcsnc.com-parentacademy. Yesterday, I had the privilege to attend the City of High Points Annual Martin Luther King Junior Day Breakfast in Greensboro. Page High Principal Eric Nagley, members of our board and members of his staff, attended the Greensboro Martin Luther King Breakfast, where Page teacher Erin Hunter was recognized with the Everyday Champions of Human Rights Award. The City of Greensboro shared the following about Ms. Hunter: Since 2016, Hunter has led a group of forty black male students in the school's Team Voyage Program. She coordinates weekly group meetings and individual meetings with students to encourage their educational advancement, community involvement, and social networking. Hunter promotes mentorship among the students and inspires Team Voyage to lead projects like a teddy bear drive, stocking the school's pantry, campus cleanup, and the annual Week to Be Sincere, which honors the life of a fallen Page student. As we continue to celebrate Dr. King, I want to share this quote that inspires me as it relates to education: "All labor that uplifts humanity has dignity and importance and should be undertaken with painstaking excellence." Thank you to Ms. Hunter and all of our staff for pursuing excellence for our students every day. This concludes my remarks.
You're not the transportation update?
Yes, we'll now welcome, um, Fay Crowder Phillips, Dr. John Carlos Miller, and Dr. Julius Monk, who will share a transportation update. Just want to, for the board and the public, uh, make sure that, um, you understand we're gonna do, uh, th- this initial transportation update, and then at our next retreat, we're gonna do a deeper dive, um, into transportation so that you are kind of aware of what's coming. But we're gonna talk about some staffing, some general needs, some challenges, and then some progress that the department has made under, uh, Ms. Crowder Phillips' leadership.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Oakley and members of the board. I appreciate this opportunity to share with you the work being done in the Transportation Department for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Today, I will highlight six areas in this transportation update presentation: Staffing, Projections, and Challenges, Routing, and our recent successful conversion from Edge Log to Bus Planner, Our Efficiency Rating from the State and Barriers That Influence Our Score, The Call Center, Upcoming Projects in the Department, and our next steps. Staffing continues to offer challenges, but your recent approval of pay increases for classified staff was met with positive comments and increased employee satisfaction. My staff is very appreciative of the increases and the decompressed salary scale which is now offered. Our future looks brighter for recruiting the best employees for our district. Shortages across the state for bus drivers continue to present challenges for school districts seeking to fill positions. Our vacancies have remained in the fifties, even despite our strong recruiting efforts. We need to continue to advocate at the state level for competitive salaries for classified staff. We currently have fifty-five vacancies, even though we have seen an increased number of applicants and new hires within our department. This compares to last year when we had more vacancies. The ESAR-funded Performance and Attendance Bonus continues to keep our employees with longevity in our system and provides an added incentive for new hires. We have purchased nine passenger vans, and we currently have eight of them on the road. The use of these vans help us to facilitate transportation for our McKinney-Vento students, which are the students in transition. The continuation of the monthly bonus supports our efforts to retain employees, and we've been able to keep employees that are eligible for retirement. Our rider system continues to be effective and has kept potential employees engaged throughout the hiring process. After a bus driver applicant passes the required written test, they are hired as a substitute until they successfully complete on-the-road training. And because the wait times behind the wheel have decreased, we are now able to get new drivers behind the wheel quicker, and we have decreased the number of applicants that are lost in the process. Despite our current vacancies, I am very proud that our eighty-three to eighty-four percent on-time arrival percentage continues to remain consistent with last year. We are always looking for ways to increase that percentage. Our employees' voices matter. Our staff is aware that there are many opportunities to share their concerns and ideas because we value their opinions and their comments. We have an Employee Advisory Committee, Quarterly Employee Meetings, and Monthly Safety Meetings. The last time I presented, I highlighted the issues that we were experiencing getting our trainees scheduled for behind-the-wheel training. We immediately set up a meeting with Driver Education Specialist, or DES, from the Division of Motor Vehicles, and their leadership in developing strategies that would benefit Guilford County, and we are appreciative of their partnership. We have cut thirty to forty-five days off the wait time for behind-the-wheel training after the initial fourteen-day waiting period. DES has allowed our in-house recruiter to schedule the trainees, and the turnaround time for employees has been drastically cut. The backlog is no longer an issue for our district. Our leadership team is also able to conduct, conduct road checks for CDL holders who have current license and who are transferring from another district. This prevents additional work for our DES representatives, so it's a win-win. We are currently thirteen mechanics short, and we have two employees that are currently out on medical leave. We have three bus lots without a permanently assigned mechanic. Those include Grimsly, Southern, and Northwest. They are being covered now by a route supervisor, a night supervisor, and a night mechanic who is currently working two shifts. Our applicant pool is increasing, and we think since we are more competitive with salaries than we were in the past, we will continue to see an influx of good applicants. We have been very fortunate in recruiting some excellent employees with strong mechanical experience, and some employees who lack experience but very eager to learn the trade. We are working on a plan to partner with Career and Technical Education, or the CTE team, to create a program for on-site educational experience for students that are interested in learning a trade. We are pleased with the improvements that are taking place in our Fleet Service Department. This year, we received thirty new yellow buses to replace those that had met the mileage and/or the twenty-year mark. We purchased nine new minivans that are used to transport our students in transition, the McKinney-Vento students, and this has allowed us to decrease their ride times by one and a half to two hours and to begin reducing contracted van service. I reported in my last update that we were waiting on the chassis for our new tire trucks, which were delayed due to the ti- supply chain issue. We are excited that our nineteen-eighty-six and our nineteen-eighty-nine tire trucks have been replaced with two twenty-twenty-three tire trucks. Upon the recommendation of the State Transportation Inspector, we are working to replace the older nineteen-eighty-nine to nineteen-ninety-two Activity Buses in our fleet. We have purchased thirteen of the yellow buses that would have been parked, and we have converted them to Activity Buses. We have completed six of those buses, and two are currently in the shop. We hope to have this task completed by the end of the school year. The district has also purchased five brand-new Activity Buses, which will be placed in operation on five bus lots in the coming weeks. The replacement of our twenty-year tire-changing machine and the tire balancer has drastically improved the efficiency and the safety of the tire, for the tire technicians. The updating of the fifteen-year vehicle inspection machine has been positive, that we no longer use a telephone line to communicate with Raleigh DMV, but we are using modern technology like other inspection sites across the state. We continue updating our shop tools and have currently replaced forty percent of the tools. We are also, we will also continue to provide a tool allowance to our mechanics, and we'll be providing a standard toolbox to all new mechanics that will remain the property of Guilford County Schools. Safety remains at the forefront, and we've added three eyewash stations to our shop, along with medical supplies in case of an emergency. Upon my appointment as Executive Director, I knew that we were missing a key element in our accident process and reimbursement. Zone supervisors in the field were expected to be the first responder for accidents in their zone and complete all of the paperwork within forty-eight hours, which was not an easy task for them, coupled with their workload. A new position was created in twenty-twenty-two that was served as a first responder to all accidents and the key holder for all accident paperwork. Our safety and training manager, David Reed, has brought extensive experience from his previous employment with the Greensboro Fire Department, and he has been instrumental in completing all of these tasks in a timely manner. His concentrated efforts in seeking reimbursement from insurance companies have provided us with the funds to fix many of our buses and not use our current local budget resources. From March of twenty-twenty-three to the present, we have estimated repairs of a hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and forty-six cent, and the continued follow-up with the insurance companies and the filing of claims has netted us one hundred thousand, fourteen dollars and eighty-two cent in order to fix our buses. This type of due diligence and collecting funds has paid for this new position within our department. The next area that I would like to focus on is routing, which is comprised of our routing personnel, who create the routes for each bus, assign our students, and make sure that load counts are compatible with the bus. We have officially completed our conversions from TMS, Transportation Information Management System, to Bus Planner. We are the fifth and the largest district in the state to convert from the state-owned system. I would like to commend our Routing Operations Supervisor Manager, Carla Bolware, our Implementation Manager, Elance Benton, and our group of routers for their long hours and hard work during this conversion. The Transportation Department currently offers several modes of transportation to meet the needs of our customers across the district and to optimize our services to support the district's choice programs. With regular transportation, students are assigned to neighborhood. students are assigned to neighborhood stops based on their transportation address, and they will have a direct run to and from school. Choice Shuttle Transportation involves students being assigned to neighborhood stops and shuttle points based on their transportation address. Students are taken to a shuttle point where they are transferred to a specific bus that will transfer them to the assigned school. Community Express Stop Locations are based on the student's transportation address and provide a direct run to and from school. These are generally GCS properties, but may be located at non-GCS properties if the stop time interferes with normal traffic pattern of the property. Homeschool Shuttle Transportation involves students being assigned to the neighborhood stops. Middle or high school students are transported to their Attendant Zone High School, their Attendant Zone Homeschool, where under Transportation Department supervision, they transfer to the specific bus that will take them to their assigned school. We are proud to partner with Greensboro Transit Authority and the High Point Transit to provide services for interested families. GCS students can ride free on school days only if they present and scan their OneCards when boarding. Finally, we have non-transport zones where transportation is not provided. They are referred to as walk zones. In accordance with North Carolina law, GCS does not guarantee transportation for students who reside within a school's non-transport zone. We know that all of these modes can sometimes be confusing to families, but we have to determine which transportation mode modes are used for a specific program. Factors used to determine which modes will be used include, but are not limited to, program location, student ridership, staff availability. These modes are also subject to change depending on factors like ridership and staffing. We are currently running three-hundred-and-eighty-eight buses daily to serve our current ridership of twenty-nine thousand one-hundred-and-fifty-nine. Our buses cover three-tier bell schedule and run approximately forty-one thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-seven miles daily to service the students at a daily cost of one-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and forty-seven cent, and this does not include contracted service. As you will notice, we have decreased our number of buses on the road. And even with an increased ridership of one-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty students, our mileage only increased by one-hundred-and-thirty-six miles due to Bus Planner helping us to maximize our routing. Our current routing system has allowed us to optimize routes and reduce the number of yellow buses in our fleet to three-eighty-eight from the previous year of three-ninety-nine. First student provides coverage for sixty-two buses within our system. Fifty-one of those are for exceptional children, eleven for Brown Summit and Northeast students. Kelly Transit provides eighteen vans that can handle a maxima of five students, with seven of those covering Aggie Academy, and eleven for our students in transition. We currently only have three buses doing double runs across the district on a consistent basis, but all bus drivers run three tiers. Keep in mind that double runs are also used when drivers are absent or we have high ridership on specific days and when there are mechanical issues. The state efficiency rating compares each county to other counties based on how we use our dollars and our buses. Since twenty-eighteen, our efficiency rating has been eighty-four point twenty-six percent due to the state holding all school districts harmless during the pandemic. Our efficiency rating has since dropped to eighty percent. This is important because the state uses the efficiency rating to reimburse the district where we get our funding to support transportation services. The state average is ninety point sixty-eight percent. And effective with the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the state will no longer hold districts harmless. Factors that are taken in consideration include the number of routed buses, student ridership, miles covered, expenses, salaries, and fuel. Please remember that reimbursement for the state is one-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-nine dollars and ninety-four cent per student, and that is based on transporting students within a neighborhood school boundary. Because we have transportation services that run across the county, we must calculate the mileage at the rate of four dollars and fifty-one cent per mile to access our daily cost to operate buses. As we look closer at contributing factors that play a part in our efficiency rating decrease, we must consider that we have many buses that are not running at full capacity. It is a significant cost to the district, and we are not being fully reimbursed by the state. Next, I will shift to the call center. The call center is there to provide our customers with answers to their questions. The call center has provided services to GCS families since January of twenty-twenty-two. Since the beginning of the school year in August of twenty-twenty-three, they have received twenty-eight thousand ninety-six calls for this time period. The average call is five minutes and is answered within two minutes and seven seconds. The number of agents are adjusted as we proceed through the school year based on the projected call volumes from the previous year. Again, GCS' current internal staffing model cannot support the number of calls received daily. In order to stay apprised of issues, we meet weekly with NET, which is North End Tele Services, and we provide them with immediate feedback on issues in order to improve customer service. Issues that require immediate attention are escalated to Zone Transportation Staff and to the leadership team. Next, I will shift to projects that we have underway. We are currently working with Motorola and Guilford Metro nine-eleven on the new radio system that will be installed on our buses and in our schools. We look forward to providing that support to our staff so that communication across the district is readily available to them. We are always looking for ways to expand and provide valuable information to our parents and students. We will continue to offer parent fairs to assist parents in signing up for transportation for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. Our in-house recruiter will have presence at all job fairs in the area. We will be hosting an onsite hiring event in February and one in early spring of twenty-twenty-four. Thank you for this opportunity to present tonight on the work of transportation. I hope that I have provided you with insightful information that will be helpful in your continued advocacy for transportation. I am very humbled serving in this district, serving these students, and serving the school administrators and parents. We are happy to answer your questions at this time.
Thank you. Diane, Kim, and Michael.
Okay, my first question is, um, are there other options for offering training? Than what you already do to try to increase the number of people you have in your pipeline?
For CDL training? No, the training, um, is mandated through DMV.
Um, when the SFR funds are depleted, um, how do you intend to, um, continue to, um, because obviously it's a good tool, um, you want to answer that one superintend?
I think we're gonna have to ask that about a lot of things. Um, I mean, I think right now, as we're preparing for budget, we're looking at the biggest returns we've had on investment. I can say from an operational standpoint, we have to get more efficient in transportation. We bus kids all over the county, and, um, I think we're gonna have to realize some efficiencies within our own transportation offerings, and that will come with that alignment of some of those choice programs, which we've been talking about, and we'll talk a little bit more about at the retreat. Um, but we're gonna have to make hard decisions. The substitute bonuses work too. You know what I mean? Like, all of these things that districts were able to do with these extra dollars that showed promise, um, we have to figure out which ones that we can afford to hold on to, and we're gonna have to make some internal decisions that'll be difficult. Um, the, the hiring, the recruitment to come to to GCS, if you're a math teacher, same thing. So, um, we'll, we'll look at the list of things, we'll see what we can keep, but the real answer is sustainably to improve operations within transportation and to reward our people. We have to advocate at the state level. This is a statewide issue. We're not the only one with fifty-five vacancies. Um, and we're gonna have to look at what's gotten us the biggest return on our investment. If we can reduce the amount of contracted services we use for transportation, we can do things for our employees. So that, by becoming more efficient, we'll be able to do things like that.
What is the number one, uh, work condition that you are hearing from your employees that perhaps hasn't been addressed yet?
I would have to say for bus drivers, it's probably discipline.
Are we gonna be able to do anything about that?
I mean, I think, um, we consistently work with administrators on consistent reinforcement and reporting. I think the cameras are one step in that direction. It's not gonna be one thing. Um, I think modeling how to ride a bus, um, you can't just do one kindergarten. You have to show, you know, there's some training that just goes into that. Um, technology, social media makes it more difficult, but some of the technology that the board has approved, like the cameras, is, is helping. Um, but I will tell you that discipline data, whether it's in the cafeteria or on the bus, um, has trended up since COVID, and we just have to give adults the tools and supports they need. But bus drivers are not just in a, like, I just think about what they're doing and what's behind them and how they can go work for Publix, make more money, and not be responsible for sixty-five kids in, in the mirror. You know, so I just think we have to think about how competitive we are, and that's not just a GCS advocacy, that's a state advocacy.
Um, just a, a, a suggestion, is there a way for us to use, um, our either TV or whatever to just kinda, you know, put some things out there to parents about this is behavior, this is what we shouldn't be doing, I mean, in a way that teaches as opposed to, um, I mean, if, if discipline is a problem, somehow or another, we've gotta get it out there for people to be thinking about this because the kids don't belong to us, they belong to mom and daddy, and so somehow or another, that has to be reinforced from home as well as it is from us. And I'm just asking, is that a tool we could use?
It might be. I mean, I think we know that whenever we centrally send something to parents, they're way less likely to engage in it than when we can do it at the school level, so we just need to think about how we might approach that.
Um, can we check with GTCC, uh, uh, in their mechanic program to see if there's a possibility of steering some of their, uh, students or graduates towards us?
Our recruiter, um, is in constant contact with them, uh, and we've actually received one employee from there.
Um, do you know what the average usage of the, um, activity buses is? Or is that?
I can provide you that information. Now, we actually house that information. I'll have to get you that information.
Okay, I, I think it's important for folks to realize that our activity buses are used a lot by various teams. I mean, it's like if you take, uh, a high school, uh, that has multiple teams, and sometimes they're going to different places on even the same, uh, same day, uh, same night, uh, so I just think it's important for people to know that these buses aren't just sitting in the parking lots, that, that they are being, uh, used on a regular basis. Um, is it possible that during the Choice, uh, fair, that we could have, um, something there if we don't already to try to encourage parents to understand that we would like for them to look at using bus transportation as opposed to, uh, driving their kids to the schools?
We will have a presence at the fair. I think the other thing to say here, though, is, um, right now, we have people who have signed up for the bus just in case they might need it one day. Um, not with an intent to get on the bus, and, and even though we'll, we'll unroute them, we'll take them off after a period of time, that is causing problems with inefficiencies. So we have thousands of kids who have signed up for transportation who have never set foot on the bus morning or afternoon, and so it's this con, every, the, the, the the more accurate the route is with the kids who are actually getting on the bus, the more efficient will be, the better the transportation service will be, the more resources we'll have. Um, but having it as a safety net is hurting us.
All right, I got two more. Um, ha, uh, has public transportation usage either gone up or down since the pandemic? I know we were kinda having to use them, but though there was some pushback, people found that that was a good alternative. What does it look like now?
Yes, we have students that ride every day, and so the usage is about the same as it was last year.
And then my last question has to do with cost of gas. Um, I know that that's one that goes up and down, but is that, uh, uh, having a, uh, a big bite or in, uh, impact on your cost or your bottom line? Or diesel, whatever fuel that you're using?
So, we signed a contract for our fuel services, so we are locked in with our pricing at this time. And at every opportunity that the state offers, um, contingency money for fuel reimbursement, we have applied and we have received it.
Thank you very much, and good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kim, and then Michael.
Uh, good evening. Um, when you mentioned retirement for cla, was it for classifieds or was you, were you, um, only talking about your bus drivers?
Bus drivers and mechanics.
And the mechanics. Do you know what that looks like? After you've been in GCS as a bus driver for the twenty years, what that would look like for them? Yeah, the benefit, like, is it a separate program that you were talking about, or are you just talking about, like, social security or whatever?
And where are you referring to?
I don't know, she mentioned it about they have the opportunity to have retirement benefits and things like that, so I'm just trying to.
So, what I was saying is that the, uh, thousand dollars a month bonus has helped us to retain those employees that are eligible for retirement at this time.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Because they're a member of the state retirement system. But I have bus drivers with twenty-five to thirty-five years of experience that could walk at any damn time.
Oh, okay, so that was just retention. Um, in reference to the zone supervisors as first responders, what did, do you say that that was a new position that you were able to create? Like, how were you able to do that?
So, we have a safety and training manager. So, what I actually did is that we had eleven zone supervisors. I took one of those positions, and I turned it into a safety and training manager, and that person is the first responder for all bus accidents. And it allows our supervisors to stay in the field, to continue their work, and he takes care of all bus accidents that may occur.
Okay. Um, the estimate of repairs, it says a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's what you would get, but you collected a hundred thousand dollars. That's the reimbursement that you were, were, are referring to?
Accidents, so for the number of bus accidents that we've had. the total estimate of repairs was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Because he has worked with insurance companies, because those accidents, many of them were not our fault. And so he has gone for those insurance companies that owe us money. And so now that we have collected, we've been able to use those funds to repair our buses compared to in the past, the district just paid for those repairs.
Gotcha. Students assigned, it says forty-two thousand students were assigned, but only twenty-nine thousand are actually riding? Is that what that number means?
Yes.
So twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-four students are car riders?
They use another form of transportation, and it's not a bus.
And remember, that's not the total. So, we probably have closer to thirty thousand students who are, twenty to thirty thousand students who are car riders. Those twelve thousand signed up for transportation but didn't utilize the transportation, which is why we have to go through this ongoing deassigning from the routes and why we could be more efficient than we are.
Are activity buses part of the efficiency rating from the state?
They are not.
They're not part of the formula?
Because activity buses are owned by local government. They're owned by your local district.
As opposed to...
Yellow buses are owned by the state.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Aggie Academy, you said that we provide transportation for Aggie Academy?
Yes.
From all, all over the district?
Yes.
We agreed to that?
Yes.
That's in the MOU?
Jill can speak to it.
Let me share with you. That our legislature has, uh, included in its provision of lab schools that the local districts in which the child resides will provide transportation. It doesn't detail what that exactly means. And so what our MOU calls for is that we will provide transportation. It doesn't limit us to have to be door-to-door service. We can use our hubbing systems, we can use reasonable measures that we use with other places, and that they will reimburse us for anything we are not reimbursed by the state.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Michael, then Betty.
Hello, thank you. Um, I know a little bit about tires. Um, couple of questions. One is, um, toll allowance for your mechanics. I thank you for that. Uh, as a former mechanic, uh, that, that's a big plus. Uh, safety of new tire machine and equipment, fifteen, twenty years old? For that kind of equipment, that's way past its lifespan. Uh, now, I do have a couple of questions on the call center. It's one point three million dollars a year, correct?
For?
The call center.
Yes.
That's for twenty-six employees outside of the state of North Ca, outside of Guilford County, outside of the state of North Carolina, correct?
So we begin the school year with twenty-six employees.
Uh-huh.
And as the decrease need for, um, agents, we decrease it. So at this point of the school year, we only have thirteen agents because that's what our need looks like.
But all that fun, funding and money is going to out of the state, correct?
Correct.
Right. I really think that is something we need to address as a board. That's taxpayer money, and it is going to outside of the state. Uh, I'd like to keep our funds local. Um, another thing, I'd like to applaud you on the CTE, recruiting from CTE. We have a wonderful CTE workforce within Guilford County. Uh, we do have a heavy equipment diesel program, awesome instructor. I think you'll get some quality students. I would also like to tell you, look at your automotive programs. You have quality students within those that can do the job also. I think what I was gonna say, lost there. But yes, thank you on that. Now, with the CTE and the recruiting for mechanics, that's, that's a big plus. Bus drivers, the quality or the requirements for a bus driver is eighteen years old, correct?
Correct.
And six months' driving experience.
Correct.
Do we have seniors in high school that could potentially meet those qualifications?
Yes, you do.
Could we investigate a CTE program? That would give you a pool of drivers for Guilford County, and that would be a long-term solution. I do understand a large number of our drivers in Guilford County schools now were drivers when they went to school, and they are aging out. So, creating a pool, to pull applicants straight out of. I do know GTCC is doing a CDL program, but looking at that within the high school, I think that would be a high-quality program, just as our automotive and diesel program.
Thank you for that information. Thank you. Betty, then Chrissy.
Thank you. Um, Board Member Logan, um, already attached under two kudos about the, um, learning trade that you spoke about and about the toolbox, so I'm not gonna relate that one. But I will say, on the, the students that get on the bus, the city bus, if they don't have a One Card, what happens? Cause I do know there are, um, tenth graders and eleventh graders who've never had a One Card in high school. So are they charging for that? The kids have to pay, or what happens?
So every student has a One Card? They have been assigned one?
I disagree with that. Um, personally, I know they don't. Um, I do know tenth graders and eleventh graders do not have a One Card. So, my question is, if those students were to try to get transportation to come to the school, what would happen? Would they have to pay the bus? Okay. And with that being said, are they reimbursed in any type of way? Or they just paying and can't afford it?
So, I, I think it depends on who's driving the bus. I mean, honestly, when a group of kids get on and some do and some don't, my guess is there's variance in how that's handled. Um, we can certainly ask the transit authority. I think internally, what we have to do is fix the access to the One Card issue, which you've raised. Um, so I, I don't think that we have enough data to answer that in an honest way, but I think it's something that we can ask, um, to find out. But also improve what we have control over internally, is what we really do.
But thank you.
Thank you. Chrissy, then Linda.
Thank you so much for your presentation. It was very thorough, and I know we're gonna go into more detail in future meetings. Um, I love seeing the efficiencies, the collaborations with CTE programs. All the things you're doing across the border are awesome. Um, my only questions really center around the call center itself. Um, I see the average speed to answer the calls is over two minutes. And I'm wondering why that's so very high? It feels like a long time to be sitting waiting when you're calling to try to get information on where a bus is.
Well, considering the number of calls, um, and the times that parents are calling in, um, that contributes to that two minutes and seven seconds because often it's at six-thirty in the morning until eight. And so it's a rush at that point. And, um, with those agents that we have, you know, during that time, it's just very difficult for them to move any, because they wanna make sure they've completed the call that they're on before they move to the next call.
Absolutely. And you wanna give the best service, of course. So it's really volume-related.
It is.
Within that specific time. I know within my own personal experiences, I was calling at a later time because of the schedule my son was on. And so I usually got through very quickly, so I was kinda surprised when I saw this number. Um, and then my other thing about the call center, I really just wanna kinda echo what Mr. Logan said. I know that the contract for the call center was, I believe, a five-year contract. I know it's out of state. I would highly encourage the board as a whole, when that comes up for renewal, to try to look to keep that resourcing within Guilford County. Not only because it's Guilford County taxpayer money that we're spending, it'd be nice to keep that local. But also, again, only drawing on my own personal experiences with calling in, it would be very helpful to speak with people who are actually physically familiar with the Guilford County area. I know there were a lot of times that I would, and I had, you know, a lot of times where I called to find out where, um, where my bus was. And they just didn't have, um, an understanding of the area of anything I was describing. And also, the amount of time that I had to spend giving information about my child, about his background, about this number, about that number, about his birth date, about our address. And all these things feel like things that really could be answered, hopefully, by technology in the future. You know, if we had some sort of system where you call in and it recognizes this is a phone number that's associated with this particular student, being able to pull, you know, I would spend a good minute and a half giving information to the person on the other end just to be able to start the conversation. So I'd love to look, you know, I know we're locked into a contract at this point in time, but I'd like to keep that open for the future to, uh, consider something more local and some efficiencies with that call center too. So, but thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Uh-huh, yeah. Just so agreed, like, I saw two minutes and seven seconds and thought I would be beside myself by the time. Um, but I also know what it's like to call a doctor's office right now, or the IRS, or the airline, or whatever. Um, there's always this, like, if you, and then they say the same thing three times. So I just think that's also kinda where we are right now in the world. Um, and we can certainly look at the current contract. We revisit those all the time. I think, um, what we know to be true from other budget items that are hard is that we can't afford to hire twenty-eight people and pay them benefits. And with the retirement rate and the hospitalization, so we need to look at the whole picture. Um, I don't know that we have the capacity to do our own, but we can certainly look at what some, what some efficiencies are that we can recognize. But I think we've learned what's costing us a great deal of money is the, like, the, the increases at the state level in what it costs to have full-time employees. And so we've talked about that in others, so it's just a factor. But I hear what you're saying about outsourcing, and there's pros and cons, for sure. So I just wanted to mention.
Thank you. Linda?
Um, I wanna talk about the efficiency rating. Um, it is my understanding that because we have a low rating, we are penalized in some manner. Can you explain to me how that works?
Sure. So the efficiency rating determines the funding you receive from the state. So if you're at ninety-five percent, then you would receive ninety-five percent of whatever the state is giving for funding. We are only receiving eighty percent of what is allotted for us for funding, which means we have to take that eighty percent of funding and still provide the very same service to our students.
Okay. I just wanted to get clarification on that because it, I didn't quite catch how that works. So if they give us, I know you gave us the exact number, but if they give us twelve thousand, and you would get ninety-five percent of that, and I'm not gonna do the math, I could probably do eighty percent. Um, we are losing...
Yes.
That, and that's a significant dollar amount...
Yes.
That we are losing due to that we are not getting the efficiency rating at the ninety-five percent. So what our goal would be is to get to ninety-five percent, correct?
I would love to see us at ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent.
Well, but, but, well, you could get to it.
And it's feasible.
Okay.
It's feasible because, um, we transport children across this district instead of keeping them in neighborhoods. And so that's where we run into problems.
So...
And that's why reimbursement, and we're using contract services.
So, so it's, it's, we're, we're losing a significant amount of money...
Yes.
Because we, so it is imperative that we become more efficient in our transportation needs.
Yes.
Um, so I just wanted to understand that clearly. Um, my other question is, if we have parents that are signing up because they think, cause now, as a parent, and if I'm sure I've got solid transportation, I'm not gonna sign up for the school bus. So now, what brings that to my mind, then, is these parents that may not have as solid personal transportation, and they're looking for that emergency. I don't know if we can do it somehow, but, you know, maybe have a, like, permission if you call in and say, or have an emergency where, hey, if, I know my kid's not gonna use this, but if I have something, can I call in and get permission to ride on that bus? I'm not saying, I'm just saying, look into it.
Yeah, only if there's a pre-existing stop, I think, is the answer to that question.
Well, but it may help.
But in that case, we could.
But I'm just saying, thinking of the bus, cause I just know I wouldn't sign my kid up for the bus unless I was insecure, kinda, about, hey, my car might break down. I don't have as reliable transportation as I'd like to think. And maybe they don't ever use it. But I, I think you need to do some data analysis in that to see if that's even a consideration or an issue. It may not even be an issue. I don't know. I don't know why. You know, maybe we oughta call, you know, say, hey, why are you, why did you sign up if you're not gonna use?
And it's constant, right? And it's, it's why we have to start things earlier.
Right.
Um, and so you'll see kind of phased-in things to address exactly what you're talking about. This is kind of painting the why ahead of some of that.
Right. And then my last question is, we've got, and I, I think in my college son, "Here Comes the Bus" kinda scenario. The, the, the system the parents use, what is the name of it?
It's "Here Comes the Bus."
It is "Here Comes the Bus." Okay. Well, I just know it from my son's college days. Is, is that working well?
Yes.
Are parents utilizing that? Have we seen an increase in use?
Yes, we have seen an increase. Parents rely on "Here Comes the Bus." And they will call us to say, it's not working, there's an issue, you know, with the system. Um, but yes, they use it every day.
It works for our buses. So if your student is on a first-student bus, it does not work. So we, that's another thing. If we increase efficiencies and we can decrease the amount of contract services that we're using, then we will have more parents who can access the app. I mean, it works for the vast majority, and the vast majority use it, and more people use it this year than last year. And there are some limitations. Um, there are limitations for those contracted services.
Well, I, I just think that probably helps with, um, parental satisfaction with our transportation. I was a big proponent of that. I'm glad to hear that it has increased, the use of that has increased, and that, uh, parents are, you know, being more comfortable with where their child is and when their child getting there and getting off. So, I thank you. And I appreciate all the, it sounds like y'all are doing awesome, great work, great plan. And I hope you get to your ninety-eight percent.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I, um, so much has been done since your last, um, presentation, um, but this is, this is great. So thank you to you and your department. Only question I have, um, because, um, so many great questions were, were asked. Um, the mechanic one, two, and three, what is the, um, certification or licensing process for that?
So, um, there are different levels. Um, there are different certifications for each, um, level of being a mechanic. A mechanic one basically works on the tire truck. Um, they don't have, they may not have a CDL. Um, they can drive the tire truck. Um, they can do a fuel route. Um, a mechanic two, um, can actually do a thirty-day inspection on a bus. And a mechanic three is more specialized in their ability.
Is a lot of that on the job training, or are there, um...
So the state offers a certification for, um, the thirty-day. And so they have to actually go to a class and pass that. Um, class B, to be able to drive a wrecker, is, of course, is through DMV. They get their CDLs through DMV. Um, and their other certifications are by, uh, from training that is held within the state, or we bring vendors on-site to provide them with that training and certification.
Where do most of our either, um, applicants or hires come from? Is it through the, the newspaper, or is it through, um, our own website, or...
They've actually been coming through job fairs for us.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we are now at, uh, action items, and I will turn to Board Member Bellamy Small.
Tonight, we are considering four policy items, uh, that were reviewed by the Policy Committee and were published for pub, for public comment in November and December. No comments were received on the proposed revisions during the comment period. Members of the public who would like to view the policy revisions may do so on tonight's board meeting agenda, which can be accessed at www.gcsnc.com under Board Education. The first item, uh... The first item, I think this is item number 8A, is I move a, I make a motion to adopt the revisions to policy 2230, board committees as presented. The background for this revision is the revision updates the policy with the board's standing committees. And to clarify how a quorum of a board committee is determined, this policy was posted for public comment from December 12 through January 11, and no comments were received.
Is there a second?
I have a comment in that regard.
Can we get a second? And we will have
Sure, a second.
Okay. You're seconding it?
Of course.
And I'll call on you now.
Yeah. I just noticed that in that, in that particular policy that we, we don't have the Joint Facilities Committee as a part of. So I do think we need to update it because that, I'm sure that that's going to be an ongoing relationship in a committee, a standing committee that you do appoint. And in regard to selecting, I don't know, the chairpersons of the committees, maybe that could be something that the committees can do among themselves instead of allowing you and the vice chair to appoint those chairpersons.
As far as the Joint Facilities Committee adding that, it's, it's, it's covered, I think, under B. But what you're saying is since we have the, the bond.
I'm sorry, I'm sure we want to keep the relationship going? You're saying it's under B?
It would just be considered under B. It's not named under there, but it would fall under there.
Right.
I think that's also different because it's joint with the county.
Yeah.
It's a special type. It's not just board. That's the only thing that makes it different than the other ones that are listed.
Well, I'm talking about our participation. It is a committee that we are a part of.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, Kim. I think it's covered under special in ad hoc committees because of, one, it's specifically organized for a project for a period of time, and then two, it has, it involves other political bodies other than ourselves.
No.
Okay. So it would be, be under that. And then your second recommendation is to have committees select
Select their own chair.
Okay. Any other discussion about that? Chrissy?
I'm sorry, I had discussion on second point, not about hers.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion about that particular one? All right. So I will start this way this time.
Oh, can I ask my question first?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, I just didn't want to add on to Ms. Herbie's
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to, to state for the record, I don't know if this is appropriate to be in the policy or not, but since this board unfortunately is a partisan board, I realize that the chairperson is the one who is responsible for putting people on committees, and I think it would be ideal if there was representation from each political party on each committee in order to have things balanced. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you. All right. Diane, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Michael? Kim?
Yes.
And Deana, yes. That passes unanimously. Next item, Diane?
Hey, this is 8B. I make a motion to adopt the revisions to policy 3300, school calendar and time for learning as presented. The background for this is that the policy has been updated to be consistent with the North Carolina School Board Association's recommendation and to incorporate content related to instructional time. The policy was posted for public comment from November the 14th to December the 14th, and there were no comments received during this period.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chrissy. All right, Diane?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Deana, yes. That passes unanimously. Item C?
This is item 8C. I make a motion to repeal policy 3301, school day as presented. The background for this is that the policy has been replaced by the updated content of policy 3300, and is no longer needed. It was last revised in 1993. The policy was posted for public comment from November 14th through December 14th, and no comments were received.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Diane?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Michael?
Kim? Yes.
And Deana, yes. That passes unanimously. Item D, under action items.
This is item 8, 8D. I make a motion to adopt the revisions to policy 5050 slash 7550, emergency closing, shift to remote learning as presented. The background for this policy update is the revision cross-lists the policy in the personnel section of the manual and aligns language to the North Carolina School Board Association's model. New content includes a reference to the Fair Labor Standards Act, requirements for leave, makeup time, and, and pay for employees when emergency schedule changes occur. The policy was posted for public comment from November 14th to December 14th, and there were no comments received during this period.
Second.
Thank you. Diane?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And Kim?
Yes.
And Deana, yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now at board member comments, and I will start with you, Mr. Logan.
Thank you. It's been a pretty good week. I have enjoyed actually a pretty good month. We had Christmas, lots of time with friends, with family. Also, within the District Three, we have several municipalities. We have Stokesdale, we have Oak Ridge, we have Summerfield, we have Greensboro, a lot of stuff going on. A couple of things I'd like to point out to the board. My goal has always been with this board is to increase public involvement and community involvement within our schools. I'd like to have those elected officials of those towns come to our board meetings, attend our committee meetings, see what is going on within our schools, and know what is going on within our schools. See how money is being spent, see how money is being applied. With that being said, Martin Luther King Day was a wonderful day. There was a lot of things at that breakfast the other morning. The Page students there, the Dudley students there, and also the scholarships that were provided for some of the students within Dudley. Morningside Scholarship. Would like to further comment on that, but I'll leave that alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
Greetings, everyone, and welcome back. I was very fortunate that I had the opportunity to visit Archer and get a Top Cat, become a Top Cat with Dr. Buchanan, who I first met at Oakview as an AP, and then she was over at Southwest Elementary as well. So I just want to let you know that I did eat lunch. We had chicken fingers and green beans, and I did enjoy the raspberry yogurt, by the way. That was, that was a winner for me. I actually bought extra. So in recognition, though, and celebration of MLK National Holiday, I was able to attend the Minister's Conference of High Point and Vicinity Breakfast, where five seniors actually competed in an oral argument for solutions to problems and making the dream a reality. The winner told us to wake up and make it happen. It's been too long. Three of the five were actually students, Guilford County students, one from Penn, one from Southwest Guilford, and Andrews participated, and two of them actually placed second and third receiving college scholarships. So we should be very proud of our students. The student that won, of course, was a preacher's kid. So he, you know, had all that good coaching in how to give an oral presentation, right? So that's a good thing as well. Shout out to the academy at Smith students who also participated in the Greensboro Celebration. And I actually engaged with the Swan Middle School Step Team and Drum Line on Monday afternoon as well at the Swarm game. They were there for an entertaining in the community. We have some upcoming events at Penn Griffin. We'll celebrate the February 11 high school student sit-in, which happened at the Woolworth's Department Store. That is going to take place on February 8th. There will be two performances. You definitely should call the school and get the exact times, 336-819-2870 for the details. And following up, Penn Griffin will be requesting that they officially will get to name the February 11 hall. So they will be submitting a request to actually name that particular hall, which is in remembrance of the sit-in movement. Commander Peace Academy will have a fundraiser on this Friday at Golden Doors Event Center in High Point. And also a special shout out to Reverend Nelson and Joyce, excuse me, Reverend Nelson and Joyce, his wife, are recognized this month in Essence Magazine for their work in the community with the Truth and Reconciliation Movement. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I would just like to thank all of the GCS staff who acknowledged their little special gift that they got during the Christmas holidays. I, I hope that that brought a smile to your faces, and I'm not going to say whether I'm doing it next year or not. It depends on what the hand is doing. I also want to remind us that we will be commemorating the 38th celebration of Dr. Ron McNair, who was an A&amp;T graduate who was killed on January 28th of, of 1986. And so the 38th commemorative, commemorative celebration will be held January 27 through the 29th at A&amp;T. And we do have a school that was named in honor of him. And I, I suggest if you haven't had a chance to look at his history as to how he came from a very, very poor school district down in South Carolina, and he was, even he had to fight to even go into the public library as a little boy. And to become one of our geniuses who lost his life tragically, and the fact that an HBCU made the difference for him. Because I know the story, I don't know how many do, that when he came to A&amp;T, he came as a music major, he played sax. And it was his math teachers that saw his ability and said, you need to be, switch your major, and encouraged him to switch from music to mathematics. And then he went on to MIT. So teachers make a difference, and they made a difference in this man's life, and we still celebrate his achievements. So if you're interested, you can go on A&amp;T's website and see what commemorations are going to be done for him then. Also, I want to congratulate two of our teachers who are WGHP Teachers of the Week, Leslie Burke from Dudley and Rodney Boom from Swan. And I've known Rodney, Rodney since before he was born. So I just want to congratulate them, and I think that anytime we can encourage, and I think that it's not just open for teachers, you can nominate anybody who's in the schools as, with, with Channel Eight. And then lastly, February is Black History Month, and the theme this year is African-Americans and the arts. And so I hope that folks will take the time to not just celebrate the five famous black people, but to look at all of the accomplishments that African-Americans have made to make the difference in this world. And you can go to the Carter D. Woodson's Association's site in order to get more about what the theme is and how to celebrate the theme. But every year, there is a different theme. So this year's theme is African-Americans and the arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Chrissy?
Good evening. It feels like so much time has passed since the last board meeting, just with busyness of holidays and time off and family and, and all the things. I hope that everybody across the district was able to have a restful break and came back ready to face the second half of the school year and jump right in. So Happy New Year to everybody. I do want to take a moment just to extend my own personal condolences to the family and coworkers of Sergeant Nix. Obviously, that event was a great tragedy that has just immensely impacted our community. I didn't know him personally, but I've been just so, so touched by that story and the absolute senseless violence, which is, you know, a problem really across the country. We have just so much senseless violence, and a lot of that, from my perspective, comes from a lack of consequences to people's actions. And, you know, we had a couple of kids who were trying to take a couple of things a beer, and so many lives have been impacted forever because of the choices that were made. So my heartfelt condolences go out to family, coworkers, everyone. Also, totally different directions, Southern Elementary, I'm so sorry that last week's weather ruined our spelling bee plans that we had. I was actually really excited to come participate in that activity, and I'm sorry that I couldn't make the rescheduled event, but keep me on your list, and I will be at the next event. Thank you so much for the school board appreciation gifts. The art on them is fantastic. What a great representation of work for, from students from all grade levels across Guilford County. It really highlights some of the talents of our students and is really a very special gift. So thank you, thank you. And last of all, you know, Happy New Year to everybody, and I hope that as we move into a new year, that this board in particular, but also the system as a whole, can really focus on collaboration and transparency and working for the best needs of our students, our staff, and everyone across Guilford County schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Linda?
Now you have your non-speaker. I do appreciate all the great celebrations of Martin Luther King. His contributions were amazing. I'm sorry for Sergeant Nix and his family. Pretty much, I'm looking forward to a wonderful, let's make 2020, 24 the best year we can make. I think our transportation team is on target. So anyway, I hope y'all had a great holiday. Hope we're ready to get moving again, and let's get, Here Comes 2024.
Thank you. Alan?
I'm not much to say this month. I do want to express my sympathies and solidarity with board member Napper and her absence tonight. And her absence is accompanied also by the presence of a memorial, and that memorializes her niece Addie, and I want to make sure we say the name Addie and remember Addie, and also note that that memorial includes the transgender pride flag, and no doubt points to the fact that there is so much vulnerability for our kids who are living out that identity, and we have such responsibility to create a safe and supportive and affirming environment for all of our students and all of our children, and especially those who are most vulnerable to harm from others, and even sometimes from themselves. And so we pledge ourselves to that, and I certainly want to name that tonight and express appreciation to board member Napper for reminding us of her niece and also of the transgender community tonight. In his, in one of his last sermons, a year from the date of his death, Dr. King preached at the Riverside Church in New York City, and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. preached a war, preached a sermon against the war in Vietnam, and in that sermon, he evoked the familiar story from the Christian tradition known as the Good Samaritan. And he said, it is not enough to approach the wounded person and to bandage their wounds or to attend to their needs. We have to ask ourselves, why is it that this person was wounded to begin with? And why is it that so many people keep getting cast? And why is it that so many people keep getting cast aside and attacked and beaten on life's highway? And what can we do to transform this road for all people? And so I see that as the kind of systemic work that we're about and feel energized to do it again here as we remember his life, his 95th birthday, and continue with you to that work of fixing the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Transportation Committee for a presentation that was five-star. Also, I can call the last name, but for Alyssa, who sent a very, very beautiful Christmas card to me. I appreciate you, Alyssa. The Board of Education Month, I'd like to thank my Bluefoot Stammer Academy family for the very, very nice gift that you presented to me, along with a mystery school, which I have not figured out yet, but I'm still working on it. But principal, whoever you are, if you can please call me, let me know. I greatly appreciate that, so I can stop wondering. For the board member Napper, my condolences to her family. Just know that we, as Board of Education, are family, and when you hurt, we hurt. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to join Pastor Sharouse in the memorial and the observation and the sentiments for Addie and for board member Napper. Also devastated by the loss of Sergeant Nix. I know the community has just rallied across all lines of differences when it comes to violence in this community over the last year, and stay united, and had a very shared frustration, rage, and commitment to each other around addressing violence in our community. Board member, I mean, not board member, former board member, but vice chair Carl Vina Foster, want to recognize her and the Carl Chavis Y for their black and white ball that was held Friday, recognizing some Guilford County students and staff and community leaders for their contributions. Saturday morning with a very cold, super windy High Point parade that was just a lot of fun, Martin Luther King Jr. Parade in High Point, followed by a block party. I didn't get in one of those little dome things, so I could only stay outside for a little while, but went inside the food hub and got to eat. And then Saturday night, I was asked to present the Educator Award at the Greatest of All Time fundraiser at the Carolina Theater that is sponsored by MASK, Mothers Against Gun Violence, and FASC, which is Families Against Senseless Killings. And I want to say again, congratulations to Nanette Nicky Smith, who's a good friend of mine, but she is the Greatest of All Time Educator. They had awards for DJs and barbers and caterers and designers, so it was a lot of fun. Chief Thompson was there, works very closely with both of those organizations, as was our mayor and Commissioner Austin, reading a resolution from the county commissioners. And then also, it was wonderful being at the MLK Junior Breakfast. The executive director, Love Jones, was talking about their commitment to youth. And so they had a very strong youth presence in both the presentation and the coordination of that, and we got to see a lot of our students there. So it was wonderful. And then another very cold parade that has been organized for over three decades by Commissioner Skip Austin, Chair of the County Commissioner and the Greensboro Branch and double ACP. And I finally got the number of bags of candy that I need to get through both parades without running out. Because people just look at you when you run out of candy, and you try to explain when you're driving by. I'm like, I'm sorry, we ran out of candy. So we had plenty of candy left, and so I was real happy about that. So I got the magic number. Looking forward to my next candy-throwing parade I'm going to be in. And Happy New Year, everyone. So with that said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? All right. We're adjourned.